Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I saw Commissioner Feinstein join us, and I believe Commissioner Pennington is on as well. And it is 10:00 a.m. The meeting is recording.
Very good. Let's kick the thing off. I hereby call to order this meeting of the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, and the time is 10:01 a.m. Would those commissioners or an attendant be identifying themselves and state that whether they're here via telephone or Google meets or in person?
This is Eric Feinstein, and I'm here via Google meets.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pennington, are you with us? I am Scott Fletcher, and I am participating by telephone. And let's charge into this lengthy agenda we've got. Hopefully Commissioner Pennington will chime in. Item B is our new business. B1 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36, the new license application submitted by Ms. Christina Cruz for a 2024 professional boxer license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Ms. Cruz's application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Cruz is a 41-year-old professional boxer with a record of 6-0. She most recently fought in October of 2023 and won by unanimous decision. She has submitted all of her documentation timely and is scheduled to compete in the Golden Boy Boxing Event next weekend on the 27th. She shared with me her training regimen. She trains an average of four hours a day and splits that between two sessions, six days a week. She spars two to three times a week, runs three times a week, and does strength and conditioning three times a week, boxing training six days a week. She feels very excited about her upcoming fight. She says her team and I, or her team and her, excuse me, have manifested this fight with Pandora right before she became a champion, so she feels that she's ready and been waiting for this. She's prepared to compete because her camp is going really well. She says she has great sparring partners, male and female, and everyone has been very supportive. She's 100% prepared. She has not experienced any recent injuries, and she's been taking care of herself mentally and physically. With that, I do recommend her approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Mr. Feinstein, any questions regarding Ms. Cruz's application?
No questions for me, Mr. Chairman.
And I too have none. I think she's a great addition to this Golden Boy card, assuming she gets licensed. The chair would be open to a motion for such if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36, I move that we approve the new license application submitted by Ms. Christina Cruz for a 2024 professional boxer license.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes.
I have been attending the meeting. I was just muted and finally figured out how to unmute. So I have heard Mr. Vella's explanation of the training camp and all other aspects of Mrs. Cruz's application, and I second Commissioner Feinstein's motion.
Thank you, Commissioner, and welcome aboard. We're glad to have you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three to zero. Congratulations to Ms. Cruz. We'll see you next week. Item B2 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Marco Pelayo doing business as Golden Boy Promotions LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to the Golden Boy application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The application was submitted timely. Our financial investigator noted that Golden Boy Promotions is financially stable, and there are no derogatory comments. I recommend their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts about this application?
Mr. Chairman, Golden Boy is one of our larger promoters, and of course, they have a national presence. And I have no concern about their ability to put on a great event. So I would move that we pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, D, E, and 5-229 that we grant a 2024 promoter's license to Mr. Marco Pelayo doing business as Golden Boy Promotions.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. We have a second.
I second the motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We look forward to Golden Boy's event next week. Item B3 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Ed Suarez doing business as Legacy Fighting Alliance LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Suarez's application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Suarez's application for Legacy Fighting Alliance was submitted timely, all documents included. The financial investigator had reported that Legacy Fighting Alliance LLC is financially stable, and I do recommend their approval for renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. We've done a number of events with the LFA, and I know they have more in store for the coming year. So can you speak to our experiences with them?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Always a pleasure. They do a fantastic job of ensuring that all documents are submitted to us timely and ensuring that their events are ran in compliance with all of our statutes and regulations. Again, they are a pleasure to work with, and we look forward to having them back.
Fantastic. Thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts about the LFA?
No, no questions from me, Mr. Chairman. I've attended several of the LFA events and always well-run, very competitive, great matchmaking. So I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, 5-229, that we approve the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Ed Suarez doing business as Legacy Fighting Alliance LLC for a 2024 promoter's license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're looking forward to LFA events throughout the year going forward. Item 4 is pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228 A, B, E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Christopher Carrizo doing businesses Rise Combat Sports LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Carrizo? I'm not even close, but I'm close. I can spell it at least. I can't pronounce it. Will you speak to his application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Based on the financial investigation report, Rise Combat Sports LLC is financially stable. In terms of working with them, they are an Arizona-based promotion out of Tucson. They do a fantastic job, amateur MMA bouts mostly, and they do a fantastic job in being organized and always ensuring that they are timely in meeting all of our requirements and requests.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Yeah, we have a fairly good-sized history with Rise now, and it's not easy being as good as they are. So I'm glad they're back. I know they have a number of things planned for the year coming forward, and I just, I have nothing but kudos for them. Commissioners, any thoughts about this application?
Mr. Chairman, I have attended several of the Rise MMA events, or Rise Combat Sports MMA events in Tucson at the Vialto. They do a great job, as Mr. Vella says. It's always a lot of entertainment, a lot of fun, and very well-matched fighters. So I would move that we approve, based on ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, E, and 5-229, a 2024 promoter's license for Christopher Carrizo doing business as Rise Combat Sports LLC.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Rise. We look forward to your coming events. Let's press on. B5 is pursuant to ARS section 5-227, 225-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Sampson Lukavitz doing business at Sampson Boxing LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Lukavitz's application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The financial investigator notes that Sampson Boxing LLC is financially stable. It's been a little while since we've last worked with Mr. Lukavitz, but we look forward to welcoming him back to Arizona soon, and it's always a pleasure working with him as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vella.
I do recommend the approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a rich history with Sampson Boxing, too. I've done some fantastic events over the years with those folks, too. So it's exciting to have them back looking to do more. Commissioners, thoughts about Sampson Boxing?
No concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
Okay. The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, E, and 5-229, that we grant a 2024 promoter's license to Mr. Sampson Lukavitz doing business as Sampson Boxing LLC.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Sampson Boxing. Item 6 is also pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Christopher Villarreal doing business as Thunderbolt Boxing LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to the Thunderbolts application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Based on the financial investigator's report, Thunderbolt Boxing LLC is financially stable. We, last year, they had one event, and this year, we hope that they have more. They are a pleasure to work with. Again, always in compliance, as the others have been, and we look forward to working with them again.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Vella. Commissioners, thoughts about Thunderbolts' application?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
No questions from me either, and I would move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, that we renew the license application submitted by Mr. Christopher Villarreal doing business as Thunderbolt Boxing LLC for a 2024 promoter's license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Villarreal. B7 is pursuant to ARS section 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Robert Arum doing business as Top Rank Incorporated for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to the Top Rank application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We had, we've had some fantastic events with the Top Rank in the last year and look forward to welcoming them back this year. The financial report came back stable, and they're set to have another event in March, March 29th. And I do recommend their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts about Mr. Arum and his application?
Mr. Chairman, I believe I've heard of Mr. Arum. I have thoroughly enjoyed these events extraordinarily well-run and great matchmaking. So no further questions for me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions or comments either.
Thank you. The chair would be open to a motion if one exists.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, E, and 5-229, that we grant a 2024 promoter's license to Mr. Robert Arum, Arum doing business as Top Rank Incorporated.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Top Rank. Look forward to their March events. Item 8 is also pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Harrison Rogers doing business as United Fight League LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, let's talk about United Fight League.
Mr. Chairman, United Fight League, based on the financial investigator's report, does present a financial, a stable financial position. They have had some fantastic events, another local Arizona promoter, and we look forward to welcoming them back in 2024. I do recommend their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts regarding the United Fight League?
Mr. Chairman, I have no comments.
Thank you.
No, no comments from me, but I'd like to move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, that we renew the license application submitted by Mr. Harrison Rogers doing business as United Fight League LLC for a 2024 promoter's license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to the United Fight League. Let's press on to B9, pursuant to ARS sections 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Fabiano Aoki doing business as Yukon LLC for a 2024 promoter's license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Aoki's application.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Based on the financial investigator's report, Yukon LLC does present financial, or a stable financial position. Mr. Aoki has worked several events with the USMTA and last year became licensed as a promoter with our commission. He had one Muay Thai event last year, which was a success, and he's looking to schedule multiple events in 2024. He's been a pleasure to work with so far, and I do recommend his approval.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, thoughts about Yukon and Mr. Aoki?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions or comments on it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No.
If there are no thoughts, the chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
You know, no questions, just a comment, looking forward to, you know, seeing professional Muay Thai events here in the state. So I'm very interested in the events coming up. So I, with that, would move that we have, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228 A, B, and E, and 5-229, that we renew the professional license application submitted by Mr. Fabiano Aoki doing business as Yukon LLC for a 2024 promoter's license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to Mr. Aoki. Let's head on to B10, which is pursuant to 5-222A, 5-227B, and AAC R19-2-C609, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Corey Schaper doing business to the International Sport Karate Association, ISKA, for 2024 amateur sanctioning organization license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Schaper's application. I know he's with us. I spoke to him right before we kicked things off. Welcome, Mr. Schaper. Mr. Vella, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The ISKA presents a stable financial position based on the financial investigator's report, and I'm happy to share that my dealings with Mr. Schaper have always been pleasant. He's an insightful and experienced regulator, and I'm glad to have the ISKA in Arizona. I look forward to working, continuing to work closely with them to ensure seamless regulation of combat sports in Arizona.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts for Mr. Schaper?
No questions for me, Mr. Chairman.
And none from me either, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you both. The chair would be open to a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to ARS 5-222A, 5-227B, and AAC R19-2-C609, that we grant a renewal license for 2024 sanctioned amateur sanctioning organization to Mr. Corey Schaper doing business as International Sports Karate Association, ISKA.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to Mr. Schaper. Thanks for chiming in with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. Take care now. Let's forge onwards. B11, which is pursuant to ARS sections 5-222A, 5-227B, and AAC R19-2-C609, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Mark Lorenzo doing business at United States of America Wushu Kung Fu Federation, the USA WKF, for a 2024 amateur sanctioning organization license. Mr. Vella, will you speak to Mr. Lorenzo's application, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My interactions with Mr. Lorenzo have been few and far between as they have not yet had events in Arizona, but they are a tremendous pleasure to work with. All of my dealings with them have been pretty straightforward, and I do recommend their renewal. Our financial investigator did note that they present a stable financial position, and no other remarks.
That's fantastic news. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts regarding Mr. Lorenzo?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vella, do we have any history or more in-depth knowledge of the United States Wushu Kung Fu Federation? Have we seen any of their events? Do we know where they put on events, et cetera?
So Commissioner, we have not yet seen their events here, but they are the national federation, and they, so they operate events across the country. And from my understanding, oh, and Cindy Tong is actually with us here. Cindy?
Yes, I am the project manager of the USA WKF, and so we just host the World Wushu Championships in Texas. We are a national federation. And for the Arizona, we have an event in March, the 17th through the 18th, hosted by one of the promoters in Phoenix, and we also have a proposed event in early November that's in the planning stage. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we did, and that's great news. We're excited to have you out. I think you'll find this to be a great state, a great city in which to put on these events. So we're confident a bit.
We are looking forward to it.
And thank you for joining us on the phone. Commissioners, any other thoughts you might have? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate addressing my question. I have no other questions or comments.
The chair would be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS 5-222A, 5-227B, and AAC R19-2-C609, I move that we renew the license application submitted by Mr. Mark Lorenzo doing business as United States of America Wushu Kung Fu Federation for a 2024 amateur sanctioning organization license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. We appreciate your time. Thanks for calling in. We look forward to your upcoming events, March 17th. We'll circle that.
Thank you.
B12. B12 is also pursuant to ARS sections 5-222A, 5-227B, and AAC R19-2-C609, the renewal license application submitted by Mr. Robert Carmel doing business as United States Muay Thai Association, the USMTA, for a 2024 amateur sanctioning organization license. Mr. Carmel, are you with us by chance?
Yep, I'm here.
Good. Good to hear your voice. I'm glad you're aboard. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Carmel's application.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our financial investigator has reported that the United States Muay Thai Association presents a stable financial position. My workings with Mr. Carmel have always been pleasant. He is an experienced leader and regulator in the world of Muay Thai, and he does a fantastic job. We have been working together, well, with not only the USMTA and Mr. Carmel, but also the ISKA and Corey Schaper to establish some standardization for our outside sanctioning organizations, and they have been compliant and also very insightful in helping us to navigate that. So I do recommend the renewal for the USMTA and look forward to all the events that they will put on in Arizona.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, thoughts, questions for Mr. Carmel?
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions for Mr. Carmel. He's always done a great job in putting on events, so.
No questions from me, Mr. Chairman. I always appreciate Mr. Carmel's attendance and input at these meetings, and I move pursuant to ARS 5-222A, 5-227B, and AAC R19-2-C609, that we renew the license application submitted by Mr. Carmel doing business as United States Muay Thai Association for a 2024 amateur sanctioning organization license.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We made it through the new business. That was a long one, but January is usually like that. I'd just like to say, I've been through a lot of the first meetings of the year, and we're just blessed to have an incredible lineup of promoters and organizational groups that we get to work with. I think the town is, the state is really fortunate to have these great people, and as a commission, we're really lucky to work alongside these people. And I just keep hearing about stable financial condition, too, which is always nice. But great people, gonna be a great year, and we just licensed 11 great folks in different disciplines. They're gonna put on great events this year, so it's really encouraging. That's my two cents, anyway. Let's press on to C, our information reports. And C1 is, the following events were conditionally approved by the executive director from January 1st to January 15th of 2024, pending approval of a new or renewal 2024 promoter's license. pending approval of a new or renewal twenty twenty four promoter's license. The first was a request from Golden Boy Promotions LLC for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Footprint Center in Phoenix, Arizona on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The second is a request from Rise Combat Sports LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at MCAS Yuma in Yuma, Arizona on February second, two thousand twenty four. The third is a request from Legacy Fighting Alliance LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at the Arizona Financial Theater in Phoenix, Arizona on February ninth, twenty twenty four. The fourth was a request from Yukon LLC for approval of a Muay Thai event to be held at the Embassy Suites by Hilton Resort in Scottsdale, Arizona on February twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The fifth was a request from United Fight League LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at Bell Bank Park in Mesa, Arizona on March fifteenth, twenty twenty four. The sixth was a request from Top Rank for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Desert Diamond Arena in Glendale, Arizona on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. And the seventh is a request from Rise Combat Sports for approval of an MMA event to be held at the Rialto Theater in Tucson, Arizona on April sixth, twenty twenty four. Uh, seven great events. It's really exciting. Mr. Vella, will you speak to our calendar for a minute?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our calendar is looking, uh, very, very good so far. Uh, we have over thirty, uh, potential, uh, dates that have been penciled in, um, and of course, this, this, uh, list summarizes the, um, events that were conditionally approved for the promoters that were, uh, included in today's meeting. Um, there have been additional, um, requests from other promoters that have yet to have their renewals completed, um, and so we do anticipate a pretty full calendar this year, which is very exciting. And I will echo your sentiments of, um, our fantastic community and, and working with all of our great promoters again. I very much look forward to it, and I think twenty twenty four is gonna be a tremendous year.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioners, any thoughts?
I have none, Mr. Chairman, other than it's great to have the calendar filling up, and I completely concur with your comments regarding our promoters and outside sanctioning bodies. We are very fortunate to have such great people working with us, and, uh, we hope to continue to have wonderful events for the folks in Arizona.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was just, I would just echo that sentiment. It's a great lineup, and, uh, I think it's a testament to the work of, um, the commission and the executive director that, um, we continue to line up these events and, um, that, um, Arizona continues to be a place, um, where people, uh, wanna come put on great shows. So, so thank you to everybody for all the work they put in to get us here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let's press on to D, our call to the public. Mr. Vella, any folks that might wanna speak to us, do you know? We ask that they hold comments to five minutes if they can.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Sampson Lukowitz is, uh, has his hand raised, so.
Let's give him the floor. Mr. Lukowitz, good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. I'm sorry, I was a little bit late. I was driving. I stopped only to listen to you people. I really appreciate eh, the opportunity and on the March, uh, on January twenty seven, eh, I would enjoy force with the Golden Boy Promotion, so I want to be on, eh, on record as a co-promoter.
Absolutely. Now, we appreciate your involvement. That's gonna be a great card, and we always like having you out here, out this way. You seem to keep coming in the winter too. We don't get to see you much in the, uh, in July, Mr. Lukowitz. Must be something to that.
I get it all.
All right, good year, boy. We look forward.
I strongly, first of all, it's an honor to work with you people. It's really a pleasure. You help a lot of the promoters eh, to make this happen, and, eh, God willing, eh, maybe this July, you'll be surprised.
Ah, that's what I was hoping for, yes. Let's do something in July. We'll do it inside. How about that?
I will do some.
It's great for your voice, and your folks are always so great. Will you be joining us next week? Will we be out for this event?
Eh, no, I'll be on the twenty seven of, eh, yeah, this next week. I forgot about it. Yeah, eh, eh, January twenty seven, I'll be there. I'm arriving on the twenty four, I believe.
Very good. We look forward to seeing you.
I will be there, and I'm so honored to work with your people. Thank you very much. God bless you all.
We feel the same way about you and your folks. Thanks so much. We'll see you next week.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Uh, Mr. Vella, anyone else wanna talk?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I do not see any other hands raised, so I think it's okay to press on.
That we will, which gets us to E, which is the call to the commission. Commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. Mr. Vella, is there something you'd like to chat about?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to, um, wish everyone a Happy New Year, um, and express my gratitude for all of the tremendous work uh, that's been done and that was done in twenty twenty three. We had wonderful events, um, and our staff did just an amazing job. Uh, I'd also like to give a shout out, a huge shout out to our, um, our staff and some racing, uh, employees who have been assisting us as well. Uh, so Idrania Felix, uh, Vicky Bays, and Chris Thornton have all been very instrumental in helping us to, um, launch the concussion testing. Uh, we have completed over seventy, uh, eh, um, baseline tests for athletes, and we've done it right in our office. Uh, we've also, um, opened it to virtual, um, virtual appointments for fighters from out of the state or out of the, out of the valley who can't, uh, make it to the office. And so they've done an amazing job in proctoring these tests, and the goal is to get as many of the baseline screenings done as early in the year as possible. Uh, so January thirty first, we would like to have a good portion of, uh, of the renewal licenses, uh, or the renewal combatants, um, baseline testing completed. Um, with that said, we also have, have launched a huge initiative for, uh, to encourage renewal licensing by January thirty first. Um, and so we have, we have a condensed renew, um, renewal form that has made, uh, licensing much quicker for all of our licensees, and Idrania has been hard at work, uh, processing all of those renewal licenses, um, and so it, it's been, it's been really a pleasure to see, uh, all the work that's been done in such a short amount of time, and, um, we're setting the, setting the ball high for, uh, for twenty twenty four, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Vella, and then to be clear, um, yourself and Miss Felix, you guys are steering this ship, and you've done a great job with it. You, uh, we have great compliant promoters and outside sanctioning bodies because of, I think, your ability to communicate with them and express what our hopes and dreams are when it comes to paperwork and the like. So you've done a great job with it, and we're looking forward to another great year with you guys, but, and thank you to all the folks from racing for coming over and trying to help us, uh, with the front end of the, the baseline testing. It's hugely important, and I'm so glad we're making such strides. So, yeah, it's gonna be a great year. I, I've never been so optimistic. It's gonna be a great year. Um, Commissioners, Commissioner Feinstein, anything you'd like to say?
No, no further comments for me, um, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pennington?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to know the status of our, uh, proposed legislation for this year. Where do we stand on all of that?
Mr. Commissioner, uh, I am not sure that, uh, Max is present on the meeting. It doesn't look like he is, but I will, um, I will get an update from Mr. Max Hardgraves and, uh, give you a report back.
Okay, I, I think it would be important for all the commission members to know what the status of that is, but, um, so I, I thank you for doing that. Uh, secondly, I was on the website just, uh, a couple of moments ago, and I did not find our calendar of events. I found the calendar showing the commission meetings, but I didn't see anything that shows our events, and maybe I just didn't know how to find them.
So you, you were looking in the correct place, uh, Commissioner. The events have not been posted as, uh, as they were pending renewal. Um, so those, those events are not posted on our public calendar until, um, until I presented them to the commission, uh, in, in the event reports.
Okay, super. So, uh, shortly, I mean, within the next week or so, we'll probably have the calendar available for these events to be scheduled.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Great, great. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I'd like to note that, uh, Mr. Juan Estrada has his hand raised.
Ah, let's put him on. Mr. Estrada, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I just, uh, wanna echo, uh, Mr. Vella's, uh, comments as well as yours, uh, but I also wanna make sure that, uh, obviously we extend the, the gratitude to financial investigator Shannon Lingell for getting all those financials ready for, uh, for review and, and approval for the commission. So, again, I wanna thank Shannon Ling, Ling, Ling Hill, our financial investigator, for getting them all done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada, and thank you, uh, it's a handful doing these financials, and, uh, eleven of them, that's a bunch, and I know there's more on the way, but, uh, it's critically important that we look at that, and so we, we can't thank you enough. I know we fairly quickly went through them, but that's because of the, uh, cheerful work you've done prior, so thank you, thank you so much. Uh, do we have anything else, Mr. Vella, or are we ready to press on?
Uh, nothing for me, sir. I, I do think, push on.
And let's go to F, which is the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at ten AM on Wednesday, February twenty first, at two thousand twenty four, and is subject to change based on a quorum. Item G is adjournment, and, uh, great things are afoot, everybody, but let's adjourn this and get to work. We got much to do. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are officially adjourned. Thank you all for your time. It's gonna be a great year. Take care now.
Bye-bye.